And I have a motion to open the Wednesday, April 15th Board of Education meeting at 6:37 PM.
I move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 I will make a motion to move into executive session to discuss contracts, seek advice of counsel, the employment history of particular persons, and real estate transactions. Can I get a second to move into exec?
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll see you there. Okay, see you there. Welcome to the Wednesday, April 15th Board of Education meeting via Zoom. The board has been in executive session discussing contract negotiations, seeking advice of counsel, discussing real estate contracts, and the employment history of particular persons. Can I have a motion to reopen the public meeting?
I move.
Can I have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, please rise or salute for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Holly McCall. Okay, good evening, everyone. I will start with the President's report. I just want to welcome also everyone who is joining us remotely. I hope that despite the social distancing mandates, that everyone found a way to celebrate Passover and Easter with their families, either with a small group staying safe at home together or via Zoom. I personally enjoyed seeing screenshots of everyone finding a way to connect with their families and celebrate in spite of the challenging setup. We are now into Week 5 of remote learning. I know it has challenges, but it does have rewards as well. I did want to highlight two bright spots, and that is that the New York State Department of Education has a special section on its website related to the COVID-19 crisis and remote learning, and it has links to, it links on it to a district planning page. And on that page, there are three sample plans for remote learning from three districts across the state, and the first plan listed is Chappaqua. So I know that I speak on behalf of the board, that we are not surprised by this, but very proud. Christine, and Adam, and Josh, and our entire administrative team came up with a remarkably well-thought-out and crafted and detailed remote learning plan, and we are happy that they were recognized for this by the Department of Education as clear leaders on this front. I know that people are still having challenges. We know it's not easy. I know Christine will be talking about more of that this evening. I did also want to applaud Adam and the team for the passion project idea put into play last week so that students could continue learning but still experience a bit of a spring break with their families. I wanted to mention, if you did not catch it, that News 12 Westchester did pick up a story of one of our Bell students, Sarah Beth Gottlieb, who chose to use her passion project as a way to share her love of reading, excuse me, with elementary school students. And Sarah used Zoom to host a daily Storytime for K-3 students, reading aloud to them so that they could experience the read-aloud time that so sparked her love of books. And we wanted to thank Sarah Beth for this, and we know younger students enjoy it, and we appreciate that she was recognized for what she did, and thank you, Adam, for that project. I know we all still have many questions that still don't have answers. I know Christine will address tonight what we know and what we don't, and what we're working on. Please know we're doing our best to give you as much information as possible. We will be discussing possible revisions to our 2021 school budget, knowing that very much depends on state aid that we are unsure of, and we will eventually have to pass a budget, knowing that the amount of state funds that will likely be altered throughout the year. But we still will do our best to provide the quality of education that our families expect and rely on here in Chappaqua, and we will do that in the most fully responsible way possible. As for our budget vote and budget elections, we're still awaiting word on that. We know nothing will happen before Jane first, but we don't have any details yet at this time. We are hoping to have some guidance from the governor soon. And I hope this finds everyone as safe and well as possible, and I will hand it off to Christine. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Hello to everyone watching at home. We're happy to have you this evening. We have a lot to cover in the Superintendent's report, and I have Andrew Crisilia here because not only will we be talking about how we're grading Quarter 4, but we will also be discussing how we're going to support our seniors with the last semester of their schooling. So Adam, if you could pull up the presentation. And we'll go right to the second slide. So Jane had mentioned in her report that we had our week where students submitted passion projects, and we had outstanding, diverse projects shared with us by our students. Some were done individually, and some were done in groups, and we were able to share these out on social media. But if you go to the next slide, I want to highlight one specific story. So we had a group of Greeley graduates email Andrew and say, hey, we're down here, we're working in the Bronx, and let everyone know that we're out here, we're making Greeley proud, and you know, we could, we could use some. So we placed this out on social media, and the doctors are great response from our community, not only our kids, but from our parents as well. So then they sent us a thank you picture, as they're right in the heat of supporting, you know, COVID-19 patients. But what I did want to share with you, and I think it sets the right tone for our community and where we are as a society, a video that our fifth graders made from Bell that is just so appreciative of not only our Greeley grads, but everyone in our community that's really on the front lines battling this virus. So Adam, if you could just play that briefly. Whoa, we're in the wrong spot. You gotta hit the, yes, good, thanks. Let's just take a minute to listen to it. You may have to turn up your volume.
I'd like to take the time to thank all the medical staff for what you've done. Thank you for helping people. Thank you for saving people. Thank you for risking your own lives.
I'd like to say thank you for taking good care of patients with COVID-19. Thank you so much for all of your hard work.
You guys are really helping and impacting lives of many people and helping us get through this very, very rough time. I know that you guys are risking your, your safety and health to help other people.
I'd like to say thank you, hospital workers, for all you've been doing for our country.
I'd just say thank you to the medical staff dealing with this crisis, and we appreciate all of your incredible work.
I'd like to say thank you to all our medical staff who are taking the time to make sure that we and our world are safe during this terrible time.
I just want to thank all the hospital staff for their hard work. And I also want to thank my mom, she's a nurse, and she's working on the frontline, and I hope to stay safe.
I'd just like to say thank you to all the healthcare workers that have been helping us through this terrible time.
I just want to thank all the medical workers out there for being so, so helpful during this time. We really don't know what we would do without you. You guys are amazing, and we are so lucky and so grateful.
Thank you for all the workers that have been helping for COVID-19. And we just wanted to say thank you.
I'd like to say that I'm thankful for all the hard work you, you guys have done and for all the lives that you have saved.
I'd like to thank you for all your help.
Thank you to all the medical staff who are help, who helped work on solving this coronavirus, this coronavirus pandemic in our country and all around the world.
So my mom's a doctor, and I just feel so bad for watching her come home every day, and I just really want to thank all the hospital workers for all their great work they've done to help our community be safer.
To the medical staff working all around the world to help people with the COVID-19, thank you so much.
I just wanted to say thank you very much to the medical staff for helping us work through this hard time during the COVID-19. We really appreciate you helping our country through this terrible time.
Thank you for so much that you've done.
Thank you to all the doctors who are putting themselves in high risk.
My workers, thank you so much for your service and great work during these tough times.
A big thank you because of all the work you've been doing with COVID-19.
Thank you for its responders for putting your lives on the line, saving us. The world is a better place because of you guys.
Thank you so much, medical workers, for all you're doing.
This message is for all the healthcare workers in my mind. Thanks for all your hard work and getting us through this tough time. Please say thank you.
Thank you so much for watching our video and being our real heroes.
So I just, I just wanted to take a moment because, you know, we get into the business of our work, but we have so many members of our community and our graduates that are out there every day, you know, supporting the health and safety of all of us, and I just want to acknowledge that. And I also want to thank Bell for putting it so beautifully in a way that none of us would ever be able to, and expressing how deeply we all appreciate the work of our, of our healthcare workers and our, and our first responders. So thank you, Bell, for giving us an opportunity to honor our community in that way. And so, you know, our virtual. So now we want to transition. We had done another survey, so I asked Adam to share some of the results we received from our staff and from our families on how iLearning is progressing. And I think it's really important that we continue to do this throughout this time period so we can make sure that we're meeting the needs of everyone. So Adam, do you want to share a few slides with the, with the board as we did the first time that we interacted around this data?
Thank you. So, so you remember that our first survey went out after just a couple of days of what we called the soft launch of iLearning? So we have that as baseline data, and then we surveyed after about two full weeks of iLearning. So this is the data from the two full weeks, and I have a few slides of comparison data so you can see how some of that information has shifted. We sent out a survey to parents, and we sent out also a survey to faculty, and many of the questions were the same so that we could compare, but we did add some additional questions, which I'll share with you. So this is the, the first bit of data that we thought was interesting and important. We have a question on the staff or the faculty survey about which best describes their overall state of mind as they are making this shift. And there's an important piece here with regard to the number of teachers that are moving into the blue, which is that I'm in a good place and adjusting well to this new normal. So you can see it jumps from just under 24% up to about 30, you know, almost 36% on the right side. So that's a good move there. And then you see that red section is also, it's actually shrunk because of some of the shifting into the blue, which is positive, and we don't see an increase in that really struggling. We actually, actually see a decrease. And then we see that, that this has been a challenge for me decreasing. So overall, the faculty is moving in the right direction with regard to how comfortable they're feeling with the iLearning environment, which is obviously positive. This, this next slide shows data that you've seen before. This was a slide from the first survey of faculty, and it shows, we were trying to get a sense of which strategies our faculty was trying and successful with, which ones they were trying and struggling with, and which ones they were ready to try, for example. So this was from the first survey, and this next slide, I'm going to toggle back and forth a couple of times if I can. This next slide is from the second survey. So as we go from the first to the second, you can see there's an increase in those blue lines, which shows that our faculty is trying more of these things. So we saw a significant uptick, for example, with video conferencing. We saw an uptick with discussion boards. And so just to go back, I could go back and forward. This is from the first survey, and this is the second survey. So you can see those, those blue lines jumping up, which leads me to believe that our faculty is exploring some of these tools, and is becoming more and more successful in these tools. And we're also seeing a downtick in the red. So if we go back from the, from the first one to the second one, you'll see that, you know, faculty is moving more towards that blue, that they're trying things and it works. So that's good. We designed our whole iLearning system with a lot of flexibility because it was such an unknown for us, and so we wanted to make sure that our faculty had the opportunities to just continue to collect feedback from students, and we could collect feedback from staff and parents, and we could just make a lot of adjustments as we went forward. So to transition to some notable things from the parent survey, this was a, this is a slide. You can see the blue lines are from the first survey of parents, and the red lines are from the second survey of parents. And this is a question about iLearn, if iLearning has met parents' expectations thus far. And you can see exceeded expectations actually went up a little bit, but met expectations went down, not by as much as exceeded expectations went up. So there was actually a small shift towards below expectations, which obviously got our attention. There, there was a drop-off in the number of respondents. So you can see that over 1,000 parents responded to the first launch survey, and then that dropped for the second survey. We got, for this question, 739. So we're not exactly sure with regard to that, that drop-off and how the respondent drop-off affected the data, but it is important information, and it gets us, you know, certainly gets our attention that there was a shift towards this below expectation line, which is a concern. And we were able to dig more deeply into the granular comments by school and by grade level so we could get more targeted feedback, which I'll, I'll share in just a minute. This was also some interesting data. We collected a lot of data, and I tried to pull out some interesting points for the board to, to review and consider. This is a question about a level of parent support, and you can actually see, we thought or we anticipated that over time, students would need less support and that students would become more autonomous, but you're actually, we saw a shift towards, you can see this red line on the bottom, that parents actually needed to, on an increasing basis, needed to help students access and assist with the learning. And we suspect that that has to do with us moving and transitioning from some review in the beginning for the first couple of days during the soft launch to some new content now that we're in iLearning for a more significant period of time. Teachers are introducing more complex topics to students, and we think that that is increasing the need for parents to have to engage with their, with their students, which we really appreciate. But we're certainly cognizant of that, trying to find that perfect area where we can support our students from a distance. So this is another graph from the parent survey about the child's iLearning workload. We, we got a lot of anecdotal feedback. This was not on the first survey. This is the second survey data. We got a lot of anecdotal feedback, and we were getting very different feedback from parents about students receiving a lot of work, like, you know, tremendous amount, too much. And then we hear from other parents that students were completing the work really quickly, and in some cases, they were students of even the same teacher. And so we wanted to get a better sense, or the same grade level, the same school. We wanted to get a better sense of the overall picture with regard to parents' perceptions of child's workload. And so we did well in that this 45.5% is just the right amount of work, and then straddling that the work is a bit heavy, or the, they benefit from a bit more work is that green and that red there on the side. So like I said, we can drill down in this data. We didn't in this presentation to get a better look of like specifically which schools and which grade levels that data is coming from, but that does give us a sense so we can decide if we need to increase the work or decrease the work in terms of its volume. And then this is a, this is a question about, this was a new question for the parent survey about some things that parents would like to learn or areas that we might be able to help support parents in. The professional development team has of course been focused on supporting our faculty as they transition, but we hope in the coming weeks that we can start to offer some opportunities to partner with our parents, to offer some sessions to help our parents better support our students in, in areas that they're interested in. So you can see that the, the blue line is things that parents are very interested in, red is interested in, and you can see how that kind of plays itself out. I think it's notable that special education, although the blue line is smaller, it's also a smaller population of students and parents. So that's something that, that there is a level of interest, even though the data doesn't appear that way on its surface. But you can also see literacy instruction and math instruction or two that scored, you know, pretty high. So we're going to certainly focus on those as we go forward and help parents. So in terms of big picture feedback, when we looked at all of the harder data and also the anecdotal feedback that we got, these are some things that are, that we're looking at very closely. The first is really identifying and being able to scale up our best practices. We're, we're kind of worked our way through an experimentation period where we've tried lots of different methods to instruct students. So we're really processing what's working best and scaling that. We think that's going to build more consistency of experience into the system. We're, we're still working to strike a balance between synchronous and asynchronous. So synchronous is like real-time instruction, like video conferencing, and asynchronous would be like a recorded lesson that a, that a teacher would record and send out. So we're trying to balance those things. Students are reporting that the asynchronous experiences are powerful, but then opportunities for feedback and discussion groups in a synchronous way are also powerful. So we're working on that. We're working on balancing new learning and introducing new material with opportunities for practice and with review. We're working on the way that teachers give feedback to students and the frequency that that happens. Obviously, the volume of work you saw in the last graph is something that's in the front of our mind. Doing some thinking about shifting assessment, we're going to talk tonight a little bit about grading practices and a shift in grading, some grading practices. So that's something to shift assessment so they're aligned with these grading practices, and we can get a good read on what students know and can do in this virtual environment. We're, we're also doing a lot of thinking about the volume of reading materials. Our classroom libraries, especially at the elementary level, are really important to our literacy program. So we've been working hard to try to find ways for students to have access to enough volume of reading material. And then the last one is creative connections. That's, we've found some interesting connections across grade levels and even across buildings where the virtual world has let classes and teachers interact in new and interesting ways. So we're trying to support that work. So those are the areas that are kind of our, our main focus areas as we move forward over the next couple of weeks. And although it's in the middle of the presentation, I want to put it, put in a thank you slide because I know the tremendous lift that this is for our faculty. There are a lot of reports that our faculty is just working, you know, tremendous hours trying to get these lessons prepared and get feedback to students. So we appreciate them, the leadership team. It's leading in a whole new world, and certainly our whole community, all of our parents and students that are leaning into this work, our parents supporting their students, and students doing everything they can to, to be out and independent and learning as best they can with the information that's provided to them. So I just wanted to thank everybody for that.
Thank you, Adam. So now I want to talk a little bit about how we're going to approach grading going into Quarter 4. So Quarter 3 is going to be, and I'm talking about our secondary students right now because our elementary school students don't follow a four-quarter system. Will be graded numerically as originally planned, but of course, teachers are going to make decisions based on moving into the iLearning environment. And I just would share with families and with students, if they have any questions or concerns about their grade, all they have to do is reach out to any of our staff members, including our administrators, and we'll help navigate those conversations. But I know our teachers will use their best judgment in assessing our students. So let me begin with talking about our elementary schools. And as we progress here, we get a little bit more complicated in how we're approaching grading for Quarter 4. So our elementary school students are graded on two semesters. Here's a sample report card, just for people who aren't familiar with our elementary school grading process. So traditionally, our kids are assessed, and it's communicated to our parents on a report card twice a year, once at the end of January and then once in June. So we're going to continue that same practice. Our work with our teachers into the future will be helping them assess our students so they can appropriately indicate the level according to our brick at the end of this semester, but we'll also probably put some language in our report cards, acknowledge that some students may not be able to be assessed based on their level of engagement in, in our iLearning curriculum, provided this continues to the end of the semester. So that's how we're approaching our, our elementary report cards. So let's move into the middle school. Now, when I talk about middle school grading, I'm talking about all of our courses in middle school with the exception of high school algebra. So our middle school students, for those of you who aren't familiar with the middle school report card, receive a letter each quarter that indicates their performance in a particular course. So on Canvas, our kids have a numerical grade, but that's translated on the report card to a letter grade, and it's bifurcated by plus, minus, and then the traditional grade. So it's, it's done on a three-tier system on an A through D scale, and then an F for when a student fails. So quarters 1, 2, and 3 will be represented in that way. For Quarter 4, we're moving into a band system. So in the band system, we'll still be using the A, B, C, D, and F indicator for Quarter 4. However, when we do the calculator for the student's final grade for a particular course, for the fourth quarter only, we will be using the maximum points that can be allocated for that particular grade letter as the fourth quarter calculator. So when a student looks at their fourth quarter grade, they, they'll have an A, B, C, D, or F. They won't have a plus or a minus. But if that student receives a, their fourth quarter calculator for their final grade will be 100. If they receive a B, it will be an 89, even if their correlating numerical grade is lower than that. So it's a different approach to how we're using a calculating or calculating the cumulative average, but it acknowledge, it acknowledges that there's a difference in the way students may be able to engage in the curriculum. So it broadens the scale that we're able to use for, for how kids are assessed during that particular quarter. Now, one thing that we did want to make sure that we had the liberty to do is that there are some students that it might be appropriate, based on their given circumstances, that the fourth quarter may be really challenging for them. So Dr. Mazza and Dr. Fitzgerald will have the opportunity, if they deem appropriate, to give a student a passing grade rather than a, a letter grade for that particular quarter. And if we do engage in that strategy, then the fourth quarter will not be calculated in the student's final grade for that particular class. So this is how we're going to approach our, our grading in the middle school for Quarter 4 with the exception of al. Let me talk to you about how we're handling our high school process, and then you'll understand how we'll be tackling algebra at the middle school. So Adam, if you can move to, really, that would be great. Okay, thank you. So in, and Greeley, we, we recognize that the Quarter 4 grade is very important in a different way because our transcripts are used for students in terms of the college exception process, exceptions process. And it's not like that for middle school, and it's certainly not like that for elementary school. Those, those grade reports stay with the elementary buildings and the middle school buildings, but in high school, we send out transcripts. So we wanted to be really considerate of how to acknowledge that we're in an iLearning environment, and it's different, but also provide the same opportunity for students to be able to engage in the curriculum. And if they choose to have their fourth quarter grade calculated into their final course grade for a particular class, which would be reported out to a college, or allow them a different strategy, given what's going on in their home environment associated with the coronavirus. So this is, this is how we're, we're moving forward with the high school. And a, a student at the end of the quarter will have the opportunity to receive a pass grade in a particular course, or they could have the numeric number attached to that particular course for Quarter 4. If a student selects to have a numerical score for Quarter 4 in a full-year course, their final average will be the average of their four quarters. And for a semester course, it'll be the average of the third and fourth quarter. That's a half-year course. If a student selects to have a passing designation for Quarter 4, their full-year course average will be quarters 1, 2, and 3, and their semester course average or, or final grade will be the grade for Quarter 3 that they've already received this quarter that we're in. So in this, in this model, we're not, our, our teachers under Andrew's leadership have decided we're not going, not going to be administering final exams. We're not going to have a final exam week, just like we're not having Regents exams, that students would see what their numerical grade would be Quarter 4 before they would decide whether or not they would elect to have Quarter 4 be a passing grade, and that if a student does not pass Quarter 4, that the numerical calculator for their final average would be a 64. So this is how we're going to approach grading at Greeley. Just want to stop right here before we move into the next phase of the presentation when we talk about senior experience in the prom and graduation, to see if the board has any questions about, about grading that we can answer for you.
I just have one question.
Go ahead, Hillary.
Do the high school students, when they elect at the end of the quarter, either the, the grade or the pass fail, can they do that on a course by course basis, or are they doing it for all their courses collectively?
We're going to do this on a course-by-course basis. So I, what I, what I like about your question is that it illustrates the complicated, the complicated administrative process that we'll have to engage in to support our students at the high school level, but we feel like it's, this opportunity for our students is really important, given the situation that we're in and the meaning behind the transcripts for our Greeley students. So we're going to work out the logistics on how we're going to do this, and we'll communicate that out to the families in the future, but we will allow students to elect on a course-by-course basis which grading option they would prefer to use for Quarter 4.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question about this. So will their choice of a pass fail or numeric grade be reflected in their transcript?
So that's a great question, Vicky. So.
And I guess what I'm getting at is will the colleges know what they opted when they get their final grade?
Right, so on the transcript, only final grades are spent, sent to the colleges. So they're, they won't know what the, they don't, they don't receive marking period or quarter grades.
Okay. And also I want to go back to the middle school transcripts.
Adam, can you go back once, slide?
Well, it's a general question. So if you have a child who's normally, let's say an A, students maybe with some Bs, and some reason, for some reason, you see that they become a real outlier with this eye learning, that they're, they're getting Cs and Ds for some reason. How are you going to handle those situations?
Right, so in that situation, if the principal, the principal would have the opportunity to make an adjustment to that child's grading practice, which they could use in that sense, in that situation, if it's warranted, they could use a pass, a pass fail model, which would mean in reality, they could decide to pass that student for that particular class if there were extenuating circumstances that existed.
Okay, and that would also, of course, raise a lot of other questions. So, you know, would you then turn to some intervention models?
Oh.
I mean, aside from the grades?
Of course, I'm just answering the grade question, but we have a whole process in place right now where if we see students that aren't engaged, our clinical staff is reaching out to them. And there's daily meetings with our administrative teams about students that we're concerned about. But the, the prin- the, Joe and Martin felt it was really important that they had the opportunity to modify this if necessary because there's a lot of, you know, there, we have to be able to respond to students that are in a unique situation, given circumstances that are happening in their home in relation to the coronavirus. So this pathway allows us to do that.
Okay, and, and to go back a little bit more regarding the surveys, will you be disaggregating the data to, to look at it by school, by grades?
Oh, so that's a great-
Even by, even by classroom?
Yeah, so we, the, the principals had, had done that yesterday in the faculty meetings. So the faculty meeting, in the faculty meetings, teachers met in small groups around data in relation to their school, in their particular school, their particular grade level, and in, in some circumstances, their particular subject, to take that feedback to help shape their instruction. And then they had, we had a data protocol where they had analyzed the data and came up with action plans. So the short answer, the long answer is yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Sorry. And I know it gets confidential regarding staff and such, so, but, but thank you for that answer.
So the, the other thing I, I want to share with you, the, the grading, grading practices and, and are, are building based. There's a, there, we don't have board policies that address grading. It's all building based administrative decisions because of the way that, particularly at the high school level, the way that transcripts are, are conferred. The building principal has to certify kids' complete courses, and that's really the model that we follow for the whole district. But I wanted to share out publicly information with the board, that way we could answer any of your questions, as they would probably be the same from members of our community. Because we'll, we'll, no later than Friday, we'll be sending this out to our families. Andrew will take the lead and send out his to Greeley as soon as he can in the morning because we know that the stakes for our high school families are, are much different than our elementary, middle school families, which are understandable. So we're going to release this information as soon as possible. So I do want to thank our administrators, particularly Andrew, because this has been, it's really challenging because districts throughout the county and throughout the country are handling this in all kinds of different ways. But I, I do believe that our process that we used and the feedback we received from our faculty and where we landed is the best process in how we can, you know, handle grade four for us and for our district, based on where we are with eye learning and where we are as a, as an academic community. So I do, I do, since Andrew's on the Zoom, just want to take a moment to thank him because it's really complicated, really complicated. And it's going to be complicated at the end of fourth quarter, making sure that we work out the logistics of allowing students to choose which pathway they would want to in terms of how their final grade will be calculated. But it is the right decision for us. So it's worth the work because I think this will be very helpful for our students and for our families. So thank you, Andrew.
Can I ask one other question? And I guess this is mostly to Adam, which is in getting the survey data back, did you get any data sort of on how delivery of special education services was working out for parents at, or the kids really, at, at various levels? And also with that potentially, I guess it's really the middle school level where there's the most sort of principal discretion, but if, if the provision of special education wasn't going as sort of seamlessly as, as some of the rest of this, could that be a place where the principals have some discretion then to go to the, the pass fail model?
Yeah, I think it certainly could be. It's, special education and how students are able to access their education in this environment has been interesting and challenging in lots of ways. We, we find that some of our special education students are really enjoying some of the new latitude that they have. We've heard reports of students appreciating, you know, special education and non-special education, appreciating the ability to work at their own pace and pause videos and take notes and re-watch and things like that. So, so there's some of these practices that really seem to be benefiting all of our students, and in some cases especially special education students. But there's, there's like lots of very real challenges when it comes to some of the services that we are trying to provide from a distance. We could come up with lots of examples of those, and, and some of that came out anecdotally in the data. But certainly this, this grading system at the middle school and the high school would give, at the high school, students some choice with regard to like taking a pass, just as an example. And then at the, at the middle school, like you saw, at the principal's discretion, they can adjust the grade to be a pass fail versus a number grade. But yeah, it's, it's certainly something that we're keeping a close eye on. It's been particularly challenging in this eye learning environment.
I also think it's important to read in families that the transcript that I would say is most critical is the high school transcript. It's not the middle school grade report, and it's certainly not the elementary grade report. And while those, while grades are important, the flexibility in how teachers grade at the K eight level, with the exception of that algebra course, is necessary in this circumstance, but it's also very important that we assess our students regularly to understand the skill work that's happening, even in the eye learning environment. So our work with our faculty will be on designing assessments and designing lessons where they're able to engage students in curriculum and accurately report to families how students are mastering skill work that still needs to continue while we're on virtual instruction. Which, I'm sorry, which, and I just want to, sorry Jane, just-
No, go ahead.
Which in all likelihood will extend beyond April. And so we, we've developed a model that will enable us, that will carry us through to June if that is necessary, which quite frankly, at this point in time, may be very necessary, which is why we're going to talk a little bit about how we're going to handle our seniors with the assumption that we may not return. And I, I, and I think that it's important for us to be in this place now at this time. So going into quarters four, people have an expectation of how we plan on handling this. So go ahead, Jane.
I just, my question was in terms of, I think, first of all, I think it's, it's great, and I think, I, I can imagine what went into doing this, but I think it really gives the students option, I understand, options, but I understand it must be very time consuming on the instructor side and administrative side. How will they exercise this option because they won't know what their fourth quarter grade is till later? How will that come about?
That's a great question. So we've, we have left the, so school concludes, I think June 26th. So we've closed grades on the 19th for the high school.
Okay.
So they'll have time to see their final grade. We've, John Gorman, who is our, our tech-
DIO.
Person, who is like unbelievable, has been able to create a system where students will be able to, at the end of the fourth quarter, see what their average will be if we just use quarters one, two, and three versus what their average will be when their fourth quarter grade is computed. And so then students will, will develop a system, which we're still working out, where students will see their fourth quarter, their final grade with the fourth quarter included, their final grade without the fourth quarter included. And then we'll have a process where they'll notify us if they'd like us to change their fourth quarter grade to a pass. And then we'll have a process in place that's pretty consistent.
Right.
So probably leveraging our administrative staff and our secretaries to make those adjustments for kids.
I think because I, I, tell me if I'm wrong, I know like traditionally, you know, the kids, like they shut down Canvas and the kids don't always know what their final grade is. So they're changing this, the way you're going to notify them.
Right, and, and so because we're not having finals, we have, we have more, we have more runway to do that.
Okay, okay.
But we're still working out different aspects of the logistics of how we're going to do this, but we, we have more, we have, we have about a month and a half.
Okay, okay.
So the way we've structured it is, it's the expectation that students will continue to work as hard as they can in the situation, given the situation dynamics that we're, we're in and that they're facing individually, but then at the end of the day, they'll have a choice that they'll be able to make as to how they want their final grade calculated. And I want to thank our Greeley faculty for, for being open to this idea and really supporting it. Because, you know, we, the administrat- just for, for decision making sake, just so you understand, that we're not in a district where we're going to be top down decision making anything here because our faculty has a very strong voice, as they should, in how we move forward in grading students and sharing feedback with families. So while at times we have to make decisions that maybe not, there's not, everyone doesn't agree with, their voice is at the table when we're making those decisions. And this is, this particular transcript process and grading process that Greeley has, is supporting is tremendous. And so I want to take a moment and, and thank them. But again, I'm not surprised that this is the direction that they, they went in because we presented different options, because I, I do believe it's the best one for our kids, given the competitive nature of where our kids go to school and how important our transcripts are. So I do want to take a minute and thank them for devising something that's pretty much a departure from probably what a lot of other districts in the area are doing. But I do think this is a great plan for us. So.
I still had one question. I just want to confirm, I, I know that we don't think it's likely that we're going to be able to return on April 30th or whatever the latest date is, but if, if everything changed and somehow we did, would this still be the grading plan for the fourth quarter?
Yeah, I think, so the fourth quarter begins in about a week. So at this point, I think that we would continue in this direction. But, you know, if, if for some reason we felt like we, we wanted to shift back to the old model, I would, I would, and we're talking only about the middle school and the high school, I would bring that back to you before we made an adjustment in that way. But I think, given the situation that we're in, our consistency is really important. So we're, we're moving forward as if this will be the quarter four grading model, regardless of whether or not students return to the building.
Thank you.
Is it, Adam, is there a consistency in the amount of work or what is being given to the students per class or per teacher?
There, there should be. We put in our guidance document for teachers and also families can see it in the eye learning guidance document for families, how much time students should be engaged per subject area or per grade level. So there's, there's guidance in terms of how much time these, this instruction should be taking. The challenge is that it's so new for our faculty that we're just really getting a sense of how long these activities are taking students because they're working in really different environments than we're used to them working in when they're in our classrooms. So the answer to that is yes, we do have guidance documents with regard to how much time students should be spending. Those are available for faculty and for parents on the, in the eye learning guide, so they can see that. And if parents are seeing that their students are spending significantly more or less time on the instruction than is in those learning guides, then they should definitely open up a conversation, parents to the faculty, so that way we get that information.
Thanks so much.
Hey, Adam, a question about the time and the, sort of goes to technology as well. Have there been any major issues where people have been concerned about being able to reliably connect or review these, the videos without glitches or anything like that?
Yeah, I haven't had, I, we had, all of our families at this point are, are connected and online. We had one family that had contacted us that didn't have connectivity and we rectified that. So at this point, we, we believe we have 100% of our families online. If anybody out there is still struggling with internet access, they should let us know certainly, or if they know of anyone that's struggling, they should let us know if they have students that can't connect. But at this point, I think we have 100% online. The storm the other day was, was a challenge for us. So it knocked out some power in the region, in some cases, pieces of Chappaqua, but in other cases, there were pockets in the region where our faculty was living. I know Brewster, where I am, was out for a little while, some, a chunk of Somers was out. So that, that part's been tricky for us. But overall, when the weather's good, we think we've got 100% connectivity for our students and our faculty. We have had a few little glitches, like today, our, our district's website went down, just as an example, and some of our students and faculty use the shortcut links that are on there to access Canvas and things like that. So that, that wasn't in our control, it was their, the actual web service that we use. So there's been some little glitches like that, but overall, it's been very positive and it's kudo to Josh and his team for keeping our technology up and running as consistently as it has been. And we also have the ability to help students, if a device fails on them, they can contact our techs and we'll make sure that we get it fixed for them and get the, or get them a new device.
Okay, great, thank you. So maybe we can go to the next slide and I'd like Andrew to talk a little bit about senior experience. And Andrew, you'll just have to do a little historical perspective here because not everyone on the board has gone through the high school yet.
Oh, sure, okay. And thank you. I, you know, Christine thought she did a wonderful job describing in detail the grading plans for Greeley, but if, if anything comes up, I'm happy to, to answer questions about that as well. You know, we're, we're, we're thinking a lot about our seniors who we feel really are particularly hit hard right now with distance learning. There are just so many milestones and wonderful opportunities for them in the spring that really just may not be able to happen. And we've been hearing from them and, and what that feels like to have 13 years of experience in the, in the Chappaqua schools and then be thinking about how you're going to end this and anticipating seeing other students do this for years. It is, it is sad and, and they are sad about it. So we're happy to support them with senior experience still. And so senior experience is an internship and an independent project program that's been up and running, gosh, for, for about eight years now. Actually, sorry, no, it's more than that. It's probably 10 years now. I started it as part of my administrative internship. And students for five weeks go out to the community, they explore passions, develop talents, learn about industry, and they have this moment at the end of their senior year where they can do a different type of learning. Because at this point, most are in college, grades mean a little bit, something a little bit different to them, and then we can take advantage of that and a lot of high schools and county high schools do as well. A lot of high schools are canceling their programs. They're, they're strongly internship based and it's very difficult for them to ensure student safety and to support internships in various industries and organizations around. We are committed though to continuing our senior experience with our students with a couple of slight, some slight adjustments. One nice thing we have here is that we are heavily invested in independent projects. So it's, it's, it's not the majority of students usually, but we do have a really strong contingent and a history of supporting kids who develop projects on their own, they sketch them out for the five weeks, they give themselves a pretty tight schedules, and they go through a fairly vigorous application process and get approval. And then we help with mentors and consultants to support them throughout this, and they have regular check-ins and presentations at the end, and they range is, is, you know, as far wide as a passion project can. So we are planning to continue by supporting the independent projects that students have already submitted. They'll have to do a little more work to explain how it's going to work with distance learning. And there are some internships that we've heard about that can actually still be done remotely, and we're going to continue to support those as well. And we're going to continue to support those as well. And then students who had internships lined up that can no longer happen or were in process of thinking about an internship can switch to and pivot to independent projects. And so we have slightly changed deadlines and dates for this. Matt Friedler and Adam Schoenbart are going to be heading this up. Since about everything in the district is now moved back a week later. So the last day of classes is now on June 19th, it had been on June 12th. Our APs have moved back. This traditionally has started on the first day of APs, which had been May 5th, it's now going, oh, sorry, May 4th. It's now going to be May 11th, the start of APs, and we'll start Senior Experience then. And the last day, which was going to be June 5th, is now going to be moved a week later to June 12th. With the next week following, we'll conduct presentations, which we're working that out right now, but we have some really great ideas to leverage footprint and padlet for both documenting work and checking in with mentors and for the presentation. So we're incredibly excited to be able to do this. It's going to be a lot of work to transition these students in the next three and a half weeks, but we have a number of people dedicated to it and that information about that will be going out tomorrow or Friday to all of our students. So we're feeling really good about it and we're excited.
Thank you, Andrew. Now, if you could go to the next slide. All right, so let's talk about high school graduation. So Andrew and I have spent a lot of time trying to figure this out. And we know like across the country, there's all kinds of different strategies that people are using, we've read about. Drive-through with the, given the diploma and drive-in movie theaters, but we're kind of landing here, so we want to share with you a little bit about what our thinking is. We did receive some student input around this. So Andrew, do you want to just share? We have like a three-prong approach.
Sure. So we haven't closed out all hope of a graduation in June. In fact, we would love to be able to do it. So if we do go back to school and that state regulations allow us to hold a ceremony, we're anticipating that it would likely have to be smaller than our enormous wonderful ceremony under the tent, which is a loss, and we wish we could do it. But we would rather try to stick to the dates that are already scheduled at the end of the school year, if possible. So if we can come back in June and do this, we're thinking about perhaps we'd move to smaller ceremonies, multiple ceremonies that would be allowed under an assumed regulation, you know, so that we wouldn't violate the size of the gatherings. And we might have to use two days to do it, to get everybody in. So we try to approximate as close as we can what we would normally do under the tent here at Greeley, but you know, if we have to do multiple ceremonies, we'll do that. If we're unable to do there, we're looking to move it to as late as possible in the school year while students are getting ready for and leaving for college and some of those experiences that college have booked in before the start of classes. So we're looking at August 7th and 8th with a similar structure, under the assumption that, you know, we may be under regulations that limit the size of events and we would still plan to try to do something over two days with multiple small ceremonies. So of course, if regulations are restricted or lifted and we're allowed to do it, we would do the full ceremony. The third option, next down the list, is thinking about a fall graduation. Hopefully, we would be, you know, we would hope that we would be able to have a large ceremony at that point and thinking about just before Thanksgiving. Students are back and it would hopefully be warm enough still to have the tent outside and not too far into the school year that it starts to feel like we've, you know, forgotten about high school. This is a really wonderful weekend that everybody loves to come home. And we also recognize that none of these are perfect, right? And that in November, if we were to move it there, there are students who will not be able to make it back, who have travel restrictions and may be far away. But this is our best thinking right now for the first three options.
So what we're probably going to, will do tomorrow is we'll probably send this out. So what we need our families to know is that we're thinking about this and that we're going to do something. And so we'll probably send some language out around this tomorrow, so people have their ideas of what our rescheduled dates would be if we needed to move in this direction. You'll see on November 25th, that's the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, there's no time associated with that yet. Also, we know that if we have a large ceremony, we would do an alternate event to give out senior awards and for athletics and academics. So there's no date associated with that either, but as we have more, as we gather more information about what we can and cannot do in the coming months, we'll start to solidify those decisions. Are there any questions about what our thinking is here from the board?
I do think that June and August is very wishful thinking, but thank you for putting it before us anyway. November 25th sounds good because the seniors or the recently graduated class does have a tradition of getting together Thanksgiving Day weekend, so a lot of them do come back, assuming they'll be away in college. We really don't know what's going to happen. But I think that that date would work for that reason because they are used to being back together at that time.
No, we're going to keep going until we can have this thing.
Yeah. Our kids deserve a graduation in person, like that's it.
Absolutely. If we can't do that date, we're going to pick another date and then we're going to pick another date. We're going to keep going until we can appropriately honor this senior class in a way that they deserve to be. We're just hoping we can do it as close to the end of the school year as humanly possible, but we don't know at this point. But I think people need to understand that we're committed, we're committed to our kids in this way, because I know there's a lot of concern about that out there in the community.
I think it's really important that everyone knows that we are thinking about this and that we're taking this seriously and we do definitely want to honor these kids. They deserve it, just like all of the other classes.
I heard one community has a, I guess they're near a drive-in, so they have a huge presentation on the drive-in, have all the kids in cars and they can watch the presentation that way. Fortunately, we don't have a drive-in because we could rent a big screen at the train station, but.
Yeah. Jane, were you going to say something?
I was just going to say, I really, I thank you. I know, I think that's the biggest thing that the senior class wants to hear is that you're committed to doing something. And I know, you know, there are, it's not just high school seniors, it's college seniors. You know, some schools have canceled it with no plans, some have postponed. Everyone's dealing with such an uncertain set of circumstances, but I so appreciate all that you're going through and I think when you push out the information, people will so appreciate the creativity in terms of even like the Wednesday before Thanksgiving or what have you, which I agree with Vicki, I think that's a traditional time when they come back and they get together also. And just knowing that you're committed to postponing it as opposed to canceling it, I think is a huge thing for these kids. And I mean, you have everything from senior experience and you will get questions about prom. I have heard a lot of seniors say they just want prom and graduation.
We'll talk about prom next.
So I was going to say, you're hitting all the hotspots and I really appreciate all the work that's gone into it because I know the families, and I know they will appreciate it as well.
So why don't we go to the next slide and we can just start with, we'll start with prom.
Oh, it's there, okay.
Prom, a little bit more complicated for us because of how kids are treated after they graduate. So Andrew, do you want to talk a little bit about how we, if the district is going to do it, we figured out a way, so we'll share that with you.
Yep, so, you know, next to graduation, prom is probably the worst social distancing event to think about.
Yeah, I know.
So it's a challenging one. So it's, I suppose, if, it's not canceled yet, right? And we know that we're holding the date. So while it's not officially canceled and we could, we could think about doing it if there were no crowd restrictions and they allowed lots of close dancing and.
Yeah, right.
For hours, it's still there, so it's not gone. Now, if we do have to push a prom past June 30th, we do have a couple of ideas. One is it becomes challenging because the students are graduates, they're no longer our students and you have something off-school property and insurance doesn't cover what they're doing. So there is the potential for a private event and we could look to help fund that with the proceeds that were already collected and prepared for prom. But we could also host something on the Greeley property. Because then we'd have students on our property and be able to be covered by our insurance. And what we would be thinking though, is not if we could, not the prom in the gym with a few streamers, but if we could, combining this with a graduation option and having it under the tent outside. And we would do the most amazing job of making this look nothing like Greeley and being a one-of-a-kind, unique experience for our students. But a lot of this has to be guided by the students themselves, our senior class and our soon-to-be graduates, about what they would want and how they want to do it. And so we stand ready to help bring this to them as well, within the sort of parameters that we have to contend with, but that's where we are. So if for some reason we were able to hold it in June, gosh, we still have the place booked, but if we have to move beyond that, we have a couple of options and then we're going to be working with them to figure out how they want to proceed and we'll support them.
Right, so if we're hosting, if we're going to host it, it'll be around the rescheduled graduation date. So that's where our thought was like, you know, those barn outings, right? You have the tent and the lights and the, you know, but this is Andrew and I, we're not, this is what I was thinking about how, we're Martha Stewart here, we got, you know, need the kids to talk to us about what they would want, but we felt it was very, very important that we offer the opportunity for us to help support this because to have parents and students do this privately, that's a heavy lift. So we are so willing, as long as we can do it in a way that makes sense for the district. And the only way we can think to do that, after the kids grab on our property, we will do the best job with our, I'm sure our senior parents, to offer the kids some, a night that they won't forget. But what, again, is not an option for us, is just saying, you can't have, you're not having a prom. So that's not, that is not an option. So if the kids want us involved, we'll figure out a way to make it happen and we just have a, we have a limitation of where that needs to be held in order for the district to do it.
Right. Christine, one of the graduation options was August with multiple small ceremonies if there's crowd restrictions. How does your thinking with prom go if it's the multiple ceremonies, the seventh and eighth, and there are crowd restrictions?
Right, so I don't think we would be able to have the prom that day. We'd have to push it out, so we'd have to do something different. But I'll tell you, the thing that we're struggling with is we don't know what a restriction could look like. So let's say, so I'm going to talk about this in like two slides, but let's say the guidance or whatever we need to follow is the same as what it is right now for daycare. So for daycare right now, all of us who come, we work it with our nurses and with our, with the staff, we have our temperatures taken and we have like a quasi little wellness check, right? So let's say they, the guidance says, in order for us to run our summer program, we need to do that. Be able to take that a step further and we may be able to say, in order for us to have an event for our kids, we need to follow those same guidelines. So we could in a sense have a prom if we did a wellness check and a temperature check. So I don't want to rule it out as a possibility if the guidelines allow us to go in that direction. So it might, it might be feasible at that point, depending on the guidance that we receive from the state. So that's how I'm thinking, we could potentially do it that day. If that day doesn't work, but we have graduation that day, then we may do something the night before, the Wednesday night before Thanksgiving.
I guess what I was really wondering was, do you think there's a chance that there would have to be multiple proms held? Just like there has to be.
I don't know if we could do, I don't think we would do that, although that would be interesting. I think we would either, hopefully, if we could have it, if we were able to graduate and have it in August, but for some reason, there's a restriction that wouldn't allow us to have prom. And the kids wanted the district to host the prom. We would probably figure out a way to do it because the day before Thanksgiving, that would probably be our thinking, but we'd have to talk to the kids about it.
Okay. All right. Just what the thinking was.
Yeah.
I'd just like to make a comment, and I may be a complete outlier here. I just have to admit, I'm really uncomfortable talking about this at a time like this. And I mean, having such a focused conversation on prom and having to have prom. I view graduation a little bit differently, but the country and the world is, we are in such a bad situation. And I would only feel comfortable about this with the biggest, biggest caveat that we are only going to act based on health recommendations and that is the top priority. I would not push it and have little proms or, I mean, the priority is really our health and the health of the country and the globe. And I just think that pushing an idea of prom at a time like this just is not really sitting very well with me. I am fully in favor of honoring this graduating class in every way possible, but I think that focusing on having to have prom right now and maybe pushing things if the guidance is there that sort of allows us and taking temperatures and all that, I think that it's kind of a wrong message to send right now. It just feels like we're prioritizing the wrong thing. That's just how I'm reacting to this conversation. I just feel maybe it's a little bit premature. I mean, we do want to say that we want to honor this class. If it's at all possible, we will have a prom for them, we'll have a graduation, but to sort of go into the granular detail of what if, it just seems a little premature. That's just my view and I really wanted to express that.
Fair enough, thanks.
I was going to sort of say the opposite, which is I think, and I respect where you're coming from, Vicki. I think.
I understand, it's okay.
I kind of, I wanted to say thank you for thinking this through. You know, I think that for these kids, whereas our kids and our families are absolutely able to put things in perspective, I think they've also been waiting 13 years for these moments, which are now in jeopardy of certainly not happening the way they planned and potentially not happening at all. And, you know, we don't know what of these realities is going to be allowed to pan out or how it'll pan out or what have you, but I think it probably is very reassuring for the kids to know that you are taking this level of care to see how we can give them as close to normal an experience and a send-off because I don't, there's got to be something so unfinished about finishing this way. And I don't know, my heart breaks for these kids. So I wanted to say thank you that even in light of everything that's going on that's beyond scary, it's nice to be thinking about how maybe we can bring back moments of normal into some of this.
I mean, Jane, what are your thoughts? You have a senior.
Yep. You know what, I just appreciate the thought that's going into it and I think knowing, I mean, I think the kids are handling it incredibly well. I think that they, you know, they know, it's, you know, things will evaporate and that they can't get back. And I think that, you know, there's certain things they're hanging on to, like maybe the eventual graduation. They know there may not be all of this and we all know that. But knowing that thought is going into trying to come up with some things, some touchstones, some things, that's all we could do right now. And if it doesn't pan out, it doesn't pan out. I think that also just knowing that it's being thought of, given that, you know, even universities are coming out with the fact that, like, these kids don't know if they're going to college in the fall. They just found out they got into college and they don't even know if they're starting. So they could get hit doubly, like from not getting the graduation and then not getting the freshman in college experience. So I think just the thought going into this and knowing that it may not happen, that's fine. And we can talk about the granular stuff later, but knowing that there's an outline and a frame, I think will go very far. So I think they will very much appreciate the effort.
Look, you know, what's easy for us to do is just say, look, if we're not in session, we're not having a prom and we're going to do some kind of modified graduation before the 30th. I just don't think that that's where we should be. As I think about, you know, what was important to me when I was a senior in high school and what moments I remember, graduation's definitely one, prom is the other, spring athletics was. athletics was another, which unfortunately, based on the direction this is going, and I'm not sure that our students are going to be able to participate in athletics-
Right.
-their senior year. It's very, these are very, very difficult.
There's a lot, there's a lot, there's, you know, the, the tour through the elementary schools, the beach day, the, the yearbook signings, the, you know, all of that, there's so many that they've all waited for. And college graduates too, Warren and I both have college graduates this year as well. So it's, you know, it's a lot. And everybody knows the reality of it, though. I, I do agree with Vicki that we're always going to make a decision based on safety. I think it's just trying to say, also stay creative and make it memorable in the best way possible. That's it, that's all we can do.
And there are, I mean, in our next, if you could just move to the next slide, Adam, please. There, there are things here that aren't, Andrew was just going to talk about, aren't going to happen, right? If we're not in in June, there's no beach day, there's no barbecue, there's no color wars. I mean, these are things that if we're not in school in June, we wouldn't be rescheduling.
Right, of course. We're all gone.
Article, we're, we're going to figure that out, but it's certainly not going to be the same because we're not going to be able to host an event for kids to be together unless restrictions change. So-
I think, I think that, you know, I understand where Vicki's coming from, that this has to be taken seriously, but you guys have been working so hard on a lot of very difficult decisions and a lot of very difficult work right now with this iLearning. I mean, when I was talking to Holly, she said that she has friends down in Virginia who aren't even where we were months ago. And you've done a lot of hard work. And if we can, if you guys get a little comfort and, I wouldn't say fun, but a little more, a little more fun planning a prom and looking at the brighter part of this, and maybe we can do something, I think you should do that also, you know?
So, so this is what, we're going to send this out tomorrow.
Okay.
Or, or by Friday, but probably tomorrow, Adam, Andrew's going to send a communication to seniors and their families. So they know what we're thinking.
Right.
They know, and they know what we're committed to. And I think the two things coming out of here that we're committed to is definitely a graduation ceremony. And if the children want us to, the students, we'll host a prom for them. We don't know how, when, or where, but we'll, we'll make it happen when the time is right, to Vicki's point, when it's safe to do so. All of this will happen when it's safe to do so. And I'm sure we'll have some guidance at some point of what constitutes safe.
Right.
Because we don't have that right now.
And in terms of, even if there's no actual commencement exercises in June, I guess then you're going to have to figure out a separate way to get them diplomas in there. But that's all ministerial stuff that they figured out.
All right, so thank you, Andrew.
Andrew, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so what's the next slide? I think it's my, okay. So I just wanted to share briefly, so just like we did with iLearning, we're anticipating how to reopen. So we're in the, so what we've done is we've researched on how schools in China reopened, and we came, we've been coming up with, and we continue to add to it, a plan of how we would approach reopening. And we're doing this without any kind of guidance from the governor's office or the state ed department on what we should be thinking about in terms of reopening. So, Adam, if you could just click on that document. So I just want to share with you, and this is not, we're not posting this on the website, this is not something that's set in stone, it's just our thinking right now in terms of what we're talking about and how to open our doors, whether it's in May or June or September or later than that. So if you just scroll down a little bit, Adam, you'll, you'll see there's a, just at some point when we do publicize this, there's just a statement for the community on, you know, what we value and making sure that our, our buildings are safe for our students, staff, and families. And then we just have some action steps that we're taking over the course of the next three months in preparation for opening based on our research of things that we feel like we'll need to do. So if you just go down through this quickly, you'll see there's some ordering, there's some planning that we're doing. If you could just stop right there, Adam, there's some planning that we're doing, there are, there's lessons that we need to develop on pandemic education, there's some protocols that we're thinking about in terms of opening. And so that, that's kind of where we are in trying to figure out how we, we should be responding. So then we kind of divide this into three phases of opening. So for families that, just stop one second, Adam, for families that don't know, we have a, our, our students who have special education services, some of them are entitled to extended school year. So we talk about if we were to open in July for extended school years, and that was a school year, and that was our first experience opening our doors back up, what would that look like? So some of the things that are happening in China that we may need to do here, that we're preparing for, in case we're told we have to do that, is we may have to take temperatures before come, kids come in. We may have to have staff and students wearing protective gear. We, we, we know that we're going to increase our portable hand sanitizers more for our larger areas in our buildings, and we've ordered hand sanitizer for, we've ordered the equipment and we've also ordered the product, right? We know that we may have to be thinking about what our classroom spaces look like based on limitations of the number of kids that can go in there. So these are, and if you go down a little bit more, Adam, so these are just some things that we're talking about. Then we're talking about how are we going to start for our athletic program? So, so if we were to welcome our students back for JV and varsity athletics, because that happens in August, that's our second wave of opening, so what do we need to be thinking about? So in that case, what's training that we need to do with our coaches? What are some steps we need to take in terms of logistics about students coming on campus for practices if there's restrictions and crowds? How do we support kids that come in that need emotional support? And that's also in, in our, in our July opening, if we open for our summer school. What are some things we need to be thinking about in terms of lunches and meals and kids and, and kids staying hydrated? So those are things we're thinking about in terms of athletics. And then we go down to full student reentry planning, you'll see it becomes more complicated. So in this section, we have, you know, we'll have commentary about how people are coming into our buildings that aren't our students. How do we get our students in? Do our bus drivers have a role in, in checking our kids in the morning if that's necessary? Do we have to think about having a bifurcated schedule based on some restrictions that we may have on class size? Do we have to talk about how students are coming in and out of the building? And do we have to do that in a different way because of, because of crowding concerns? We know that in China, they had lessons about epidemic, epidemic prevention on the first day. So we'll have deep cleaning procedures and practices that we'll need to talk about. So if you just go down, there's a, there's a lot to this. And then the final part of this are things that we've ordered that we think we're going to need in order to support opening. So then we have, we have our current inventory and then things that we have on order coming into the district in order to support some of, some of our planning. So my reason for sharing this with you is I just wanted to make sure that you know that we're thinking about this in the same way that we were thinking about iLearning. With little direction from anyone, we're anticipating some of the things that we need, and we're getting ready, ready right now to order those items and to develop plans to anticipate what may be asked of us in the future. That way, we're not in a situation where we need to act and we're not, and we're not ready. And I think that, that, that planning served us well in the past and probably will serve us well again. So I just, I just wanted to share that with you briefly. So Adam, you can pull that off if you'd like. And then at some point when we're ready, maybe, maybe when we have more directions from the state on what their expectations are of us, or when we have a better idea of when we're, we're open, we of course will share that out with the larger community because we'll have a better understanding of what is expected of us collectively as a school district, based on state ed and the governor's office's expectations. But absent of that, we're coming up with our own entry plan, and I'll probably share out our thinking with the Department of Education because I, I'm not sure that they have any kind of working framework about how they would expect us to be thinking about how to reopen, just like there wasn't a working framework on how to move forward with iLearning. And any questions about that?
I just want to say thank you so much for doing that. And I was making a parallel in my mind with the iLearning and how we kind of were ahead of the state ed department and our plan is up there. And, you know, I, I guess that's okay. I, I think that, I'm glad you're going to share this with them, just to, to work things out and see if we can get ideas from them as well. But I, I just want to say big thank you for being so proactive in so many, in, in every, every single area, really. And I'm very proud of the work that the administrators and faculty do, to, to be so proactive and so prepared.
Thank you, Vicki, really appreciate that. You know, part of the, the challenge here is ordering what we need. So we're very lucky, I know Joe Gromando is not in this Zoom here, but he's really ahead of making sure we have exactly what we need for our facilities to be safe for our kids. So, you know, his, 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 his thinking is, is always really important in these conversations. So I just want to take a minute to publicly thank him.
Yeah, we've all learned in, in trying to do our own shopping for this situation, is get out there before everybody realizes they need this stuff. So that's a good idea.
I know, we did, we did make sure, like, there's certain items we're purchasing, you know, we made, there, we, that we could, if we, let's say state ed doesn't mandate something, we can either use them in a different way, or there's a, there's an opportunity to return them. But I'd rather have them in stock in case they're, we're told that we need them because they're going to follow the reentry plan that many schools use in China, than not have them and scramble to try to, to get them at the last minute, so.
Oh, absolutely. I think that's great.
Thank you. This, this, it's tremendous that you've done so much work on this already, and, and we are all beneficiaries. So thank you, thank you for the forward thinking.
Oh, and I, and you know, just the other piece, just for our community watching, you know, Dr. Levine is our pediatrician, and he reviews all of this. So he will review this every step of the way to make sure that we are doing what we need to do to be cognizant of the medical implications of the coronavirus and, and the recovery. So we're following best practices. So we're very, we're fortunate to have him, he's really helpful. And the last slide is Tony's.
Hi, everyone. Just a quick update on our belt principal search, we're in the final stages of that process. We started that in January when we posted the position, and then started resume review in February, and began our interviews in late February, early March, and been through screening interviews, small committee interviews, writing tasks, larger committee interviews, and thank you to Holly and Warren who participated in our committee interviews less than two weeks ago. Now, we are down to a couple of strong finalists who both have extensive experience in middle school and middle school leadership, so we're excited about the next steps in the process and hope to have a recommendation for the board at your next meeting. I don't know if you have any questions or anything you want to know.
No, thanks, Tony. I know you've been working really hard on this. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Tony. That was definitely a different type of experience, doing the panel interviews with Zoom. So thank you for facilitating that, and it, it actually went quite smoothly. So I'm very, very impressed with your management of that.
Thank you. You're very kind. I had to put my son in the basement, so there was no disruption. But it all, it worked out well. And, and I think Holly and Warren would attest to the fact that the highlight probably of the experience was our kids who participated and, and their questions and dialogue with the candidates was pretty awesome, so.
The kids are always the best, Tony. Thank you for having them.
Thank you, both.
So Adam, could you please pull up our budget presentation? So we'll transition to that. I know that was a long superintendent's report, but there are a lot of items on there that was really important that we talk about publicly before we start sending out the communications. So thank you for everyone for indulging me. That was probably my longest report ever.
Thank you, though, for all the information. Super helpful.
All right, so at our last meeting, we had talked about the budget. So we received your feedback, so now we have a, let me just, a revised recommendation for you, and then maybe I'll get through the budget, John and I will do it together. And then we can talk about perhaps the pathway forward for your consideration at the, at the end of the, at the end of the presentation. All right, so, next slide. All right, so the original budget presentation had a tax levy increase of about 2.75, 2.74 to be exact, but we know, if you could keep going, Adam. So when we had come up with that projection, these were all the areas that we had, had, had known. So we were able to craft something for you that we felt was responsible, given the current situation we were in back in March. But if you go further to the next slide, you'll see that two things happened since our, in the first was, for the first time, and understandably so, the governor had made statements that he may make a mid-year state aid reductions. So that puts us in a really difficult situation in terms of how to budget, knowing that there could be a mid-year cut, but not having any kind of context around what that could possibly look like. And then we have had a significant impact in our economy because of the coronavirus. And so what are the long-term implications of that? What are the short-term implications of that? None of that was at the forefront of our original budgeting process. If you could keep going, Adam. Okay, so this is just the, the chart of what 2.74% looked like over the course of, of our, of our budgeting history, and if you can go to the next slide. And in that original budget, we had some reductions based on enrollment and need, but then we had some additions to address some of the, the concerns that we saw as an administrative team in, in our program that we thought would be beneficial for our student body. Can we go to the next slide, Adam? So at our last meeting, we, we had come to you with a three-tiered system to reduce our budget based on everything that happened in relation to the coronavirus. So we showed you three different tiers of reduction. The first brought the budget down by about a million dollars, the first tier reductions. The second added an additional $580,000 to the reduction. And Adam, if you could move the slide, please. And then we, we showed you what the impact of those reductions would look like on the levy, both of which got us under a levy increase of... And then we would, then we showed you what it would look like if we brought the budget down to a levy that was around zero by making tier three cuts. So if you could flip the slide, thank you. So if we were to do that, we would be reducing the budget by about 3.5 million, but then we would be cutting significantly into our program because we'd have to reduce a significant number of faculty members and, and also an administrator. And then you'll see our support staff, we had to make some reductions. So after that conversation, if you could just move the slide, please, we were able to find out through the governor's budget that our approved state aid for next year was reduced by about $170,000, $171,000. But again, there's been no guidance from him on what a mid-year cut could look like if he decided to, to, to do that over the course of the year. So while our reduction wasn't that large, there's still an unknown about how he would be making further reductions in the middle of the school year. So we're still thinking about that in terms of our budget, budget planning. You can go to the next one? All right, so we also shared with you some of our preliminary reductions in revenue. And you'll see here in this slide, we updated it and added the stated reduction that was now known. But we also anticipate that if you, if the governor was to do mid-year reductions, we could lose possibly about $1.8 million. And then we had talked about these other areas of lost revenue that's, that we're anticipating. And then if you could go to the next slide, Adam. And then we talked about some areas that we're saving because we don't, saving this year and because we don't have students that are physically present in school. So we shared that with you. And also on the agenda tonight, we have an agreement with Chappaqua Transportation. So if the board decides to act on that at our next budget presentation, we'll be able to represent what the savings are from our regular transportation contract, provided we don't go back into session this year. Okay, next slide. All right, so then we looked at, where are we here? Then we, we showed you a slide of what, what tier one and tier two reductions- what tier one and tier two reductions would look like. But we also um, talked about some other aspects of our, our budgeting process and our future planning that we thought we needed you to consider in terms of how to move forward at the conclusion of that presentation on April 3rd. And then you'll see on the, on the bottom, we just, we updated our slides based on the knowns that, that moved in um, to the, the, the knowns that occurred after the presentation originally was shared with you, which is basically um, our stated reduction. So then, so after this discussion, you had shared with us, um, you were comfortable with us having a levy um, that was somewhere in the middle of tier one and tier two. But you asked us to see if we could try not to impact certain aspects of tier one and tier two that were presented to you. So this is what we'd like you to consider tonight. So if you can go to the next slide. All right. So in, in our presentation tonight, we, we're going to talk about how we're going to reduce the tax levy from two to five. And then John will talk about how we're going to address potential revenue shortfalls based on a possible um, mid-year or multiple mid-year uh, state aid cuts. So Adam, if you can go to the next slide, please. Okay. So um, what we have for you tonight is a tax levy increase that's about 1.5%. And in the recommended budget, um, these are the areas that we're suggesting we reduce. So um, as those of you who are familiar with our budgeting process, always place an extra position in the budget as a contingency position. So we're, um, we're suggesting we cut that. Now, if we had an influx of students that moved into the district, we would be able to um, to support that um, through making transfers of our, of our budgeting um, throughout the, through, through our budgeting um, through our, through our budget, we'd be able to support the addition of a new position, but we wouldn't plan for that outright. So we've been able to do that in the past. We've made some reduction and in Joe's budget, the operational maintenance aspect of our budget. And we could talk about those in details if you'd like. Um, now one of the reconsiderations you, you wanted us to um, see if we can move forward with for the cameras for the middle and the high schools. So we were able through our savings to purchase those out of this year's budget. So we're able to pull those out of next year's budget. Um, and then we also have some district-wide reductions for your consideration, which includes reducing one of the security guards at Greeley, which we feel comfortable doing after speaking with Andrew, since we would be adding the cameras throughout the interior of that building. And um, we were able to make other reductions in the budget based on your feedback that didn't impact the instructional program. So tonight, for your consideration, which we can talk about now, and John will certainly chime in here as appropriate. Um, this is what we're, we're, um, we came back with based on your recommendations from our last discussion. So did you want to talk about?
Let me just add a couple of things. I think uh, if you look at this slide, if you look at district-wide, we, we definitely heard uh, your comments and your uh, suggestions. So if you look at uh, so this presentation is really a combination of uh, the entire tier one and part of tier two, part of tier three, and then we add up one item. Uh, so for travel and conferences, uh, we increased it from 10,000 to 30,000. So we will look to all the schools and all the departments uh, including the athletic, athletic department to uh, contribute to this cut of travel and conferences. And uh, the security guard is actually from uh, the tier three uh, originally. And uh, compensate the absences, we moved it from tier two to tier, to, to this presentation. And then uh, the supplies also came from tier two. And then the transportation, gas and supplies, we are able to reduce 25,000. This is something new. So altogether, the whole package is a reduction of, of 1.3 million dollars, about 1.4.
So our, our thinking was we're trying to anticipate what our kids are going to need when they return. And I know in tier two, we had some staffing reductions. We had the assistant principal removed from Greeley. We had the AIS um, enrichment teacher removed from the middle school. But we really feel like our students are going to come back to the district with different needs based on this experience. And those two staff members are, are going to be critical in supporting our community, um, both instructionally and socially emotionally. So we, we'd like to keep them in the budget if we're able to be in a place where you feel comfortable with the levy that we're proposing tonight. So, so would, are there questions or comments that?
I um, I have, I guess a question and a comment that are sort of related. Thank you, first of all. Like I know that we've now put you through like multiple iterations of this and I appreciate that. My question is um, partly around the the contingency position that's being cut in this proposed budget. Um, and I guess my, my first question related to that is we have no idea what's going to happen, obviously, in so many ways in the next couple of months. Um, but I guess my question is if for some reason there's a huge influx of kids, either because there were kids who were in private school where that's not financially feasible anymore, or um, families moved up from the city, having had enough of being in two rooms under quarantine. Um, how many of our classes at this point are teetering on the edge of maximum class sizes in the sense of are we taking like a risk in eliminating this contingency position? Is, is there any chance that we're not going to potentially need one contingency teacher in the fall, but you know, three or four?
It's really hard to answer that question, Hillary. I mean, I can, I can share with you, at this point, we haven't had an influx of families contact us to register for next year. But we also, you know, we're moving our kindergarten registration to online because we've had to push that date back. And that's going to take us some time to do. We probably won't be able to register our kindergarten students until about May 10th. Um, so at, at this point, you know, it's a real unknown. I don't also want to make the assumption that we're going to have a huge kids because um, I really don't have any evidence to say that that would happen.
Right. No, no, of course. I'm just wondering that, it, it's making me slightly nervous um, to eliminate that and then find ourselves potentially, you know, needing it. And I guess that goes to my, my other comment more so than, than question, which is obviously we've been, we've been talking primarily about cuts here and, and obviously we have to. And I think you guys have done an amazing job of making that happen. Um, but the other thing that's been sort of hovering for the last couple of weeks, and I suspect is also why we have a huge attendance again. There's so many more people here when we're online. Um, at, at this meeting is the question of class sizes for next year. And I guess part of my question or comment is as we are potentially now talking about the kids not going back to school until September, um, is there any room in this budget, even if we don't um, add any extra teachers to put in extra people even for part of the year, if we were then looking at potential staff reductions mid-year to support some of these classes, especially the, the kindergartners moving to first grade who will have missed so much of kindergarten this year.
So we, we have contractual guidelines that we have to follow, right? And then there's some language within the contract that says, you know, if we were to exceed class limits, what are some interventions we could take prior to hiring new staff? Cause sometimes, like in a kindergarten class, um, I remember one year in, in West Orchard, we were at 20 across all grade, uh, all, all classes. And that's the max class size. And then we had a situation where in September, we had three enroll and we were at 21. So I'm working with the teachers we hire, we um, deployed an extra adult to help support those three classes. So in that situation, we wouldn't hire an additional teacher because then the class sizes would be um, strikingly low for where our enrollment is across the district for any of our class grades, right? So we have to balance out what our, what our class size contractual limits are versus the number of students who enroll over the summer versus what's reasonable given what our enrollment is across this district in our classes. So in short, yes, we can always find an additional position if we need it. But I really feel like particularly in this situation, we have contractual class limits for a reason. And to dip below those those contractual limits because we're concerned about a particular population due to eye learning, I would probably say that there, that parents at each grade level might make a similar case. So we just have to be really cautious when we move in that direction. Um, particularly if we're not over our class limits in any, in any grade level, because we, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't budget, our budget wouldn't be presented in that way. So I, I feel comfortable having the contingency position removed from the budget because we've, we've done that in the past in order to reduce the levy. But if we were in a situation where we needed to add it staff and, and quite frankly, it's normally not typically because we've had an influx in a particular grade level. It's because we've had students come in with a specific need. A student couldn't speak English, or we had um, a, a special education issue that we needed to address. Um, we've been able to support that through our, our current budget structure by reallocating funding.
Obviously though, if, if as Hillary said, you know, there is an influx or things change. I mean, I think a lot of us here and, excuse me, anecdotally of some people that have, you know, in the city, lost their jobs, move in with their families here, they might bring their kids here. We don't know if anything like that's going to happen. But we've always found a way, it seems. And I think that's what you're saying, that if it really does go over the contractual limits or whatever, that we have money, we do have funds available to, to, to correct that issue.
Right. We have, we, we will have money to add a section. What I'm suggesting to you is we don't do that right now. I mean, this is typically what I would be presenting in the final budget to you. But I do know we had a lot of parents at our last public comment advocating for us to add a section in a particular grade level where we're not over our contractual limit. And we're not in an economy right now where we, I think should be making decisions like that at this point. That doesn't mean if there wasn't an influx over the summer of students and we exceeded that classroom limit and it warranted another section that we wouldn't add it. But we have to be really careful about when we add additional sections.
Obviously, and I would just want, want to add that if we do have an influx of students for that reason, it's, it's more unlikely that it's going to be the lower grades. I mean, usually when people move here in normal times by choice, the, the likelihood is that they're moving in with young kids going into kindergarten, if not preschool. But if it's a move for these reasons, um, you know, it's more likely that there'll be kids at every, at any grade level. You could see older kids coming in. You could see middle school and high school kids moving in. So you know, we've got to look at it um, in a holistic way at, at the whole district. I don't, I don't think at this time we could focus on one particular grade, although you know, I completely understand the concerns of that grade. And I am concerned about that as well. Um, but we can likely hear from a lot of grades with a lot of concerns, especially juniors going into their senior year, you know, what's going to happen to their classes, their AP classes, et cetera. And so there's, there's so many concerns here. And it's an unusual, it would be an unusual reason for an influx of students. So the population would be slightly different than the usual increase in enrollment.
I also, I don't want us to make the connection that that contingency position is, uh, is a classroom position in, in, in first grade at Grafflin. That's not what that is. We're not, we're not cutting a teacher from the budget. We're cutting a placeholder in case we needed an additional teacher anywhere in the budget.
That's always there. That's been there.
Correct. And typically that position has been used in the past for students who do not speak English.
We understand that. It was just make, that was the one thing in here that it was making me nervous to cut, just in case we need it in some capacity. But if you're saying that that's a typical sort of first line cut, if we need to make cuts, then that's, that's fine.
John, I, I, since I've been here, we've removed that position before. John, would you say that, that what Hillary just shared would be a statement based on your experience here?
Yeah, that's correct. Uh, you, you know, when, from my experience, I've been here quite, quite a few years, is that educationally, we, we, you know, we, if we need to add a position, we'll always be able to find the money. And I did, and Christine is right, this particular position is not tied to one particular class, one, one particular school, one particular grade. It's really a district-wide position. And uh, we had not been, uh, if you look back, I think for a couple of years, we haven't had this position. It's just that we were going to put it back into this, this budget because we felt that it is the right thing to do. Uh, but you know, this is a crunch time that we need the money. We, this is the position that we need to cut.
Okay. I just want to also, you know, reassure our families. We're going to, we will, I know people are concerned about first grade at Grafflin. We will continue to monitor first grade at Grafflin all throughout the summer. And if we need to add a section, we will. I'm just not recommending we do it right now.
In the past, can I say something, please?
Yeah, sure.
In the past, we've only made we only use contingency positions in the summer. We've never done it beforehand. I mean, I think last year or the year before, we might have, you might have made a change there, Christine. But prior to that, that position has always been held until the last possible minute in case we needed something.
I'm just looking at the total state aid elimination slide, and that's really what's concerning me. And if we have to, I see reduce additional 18 to 22 staff members. So
Oh.
that's really concerning.
Right. So um, uh, Adam, can you go to the next slide? So Warren had asked at the last meeting, what it would look like if we had no state aid. So we, we, we showed a projection of what we would have to do if we eliminated all of our state aid from the budget. So I, I just wanted to represent that from you based on your feedback at the last meeting for the community.
That's really unlikely to happen.
Right.
But, but we still have to be cognizant of the possibility of mid-year reductions.
So I have a. I think the reason we went this way is because Warren asked us to look at it if the entire state aid were to be eliminated.
Right. Worst case scenario. Warren, did you have, did you? I think Warren just stepped away. I know Warren wanted to say something. So I guess what I need to understand from you tonight is are you, are we okay with us moving forward with this budget? Um, so that I can, I, I, what I'd like to do next week is I'd like to have the PTA budget forum. But in order to do that, I need to have an idea of, of, of if you're comfortable with what I'm presenting to you tonight. Warren, just step back. Warren, did you have something you?
Yeah, I did. Um, you, someone met, you've mentioned that you had a $170,000 reduction in state aid so far. That you saw. Where did we get that number from?
That was in the, uh, after the budget was approved uh, by the governor, uh, they have a new run and we compared a new run versus uh, governor's initial budget. And that's the reduction.
Okay. And then another slide, you said that you were looking at um, 1.8 million dollars could be a mid-year reduction. Where'd that number come from?
Oh, no, no. That was, you, you remember the, the presentation we did um, on the, I can't remember the, the eight, yes. That was a time that we, we, we said that potentially we could lose $2 million in state aid. And that's the difference of 2 million. And now uh, they, they shave 170. So that's the difference, 1.8.
So where do we, where do we think?
It's, you know what? There's, there is really a projected number.
It's a guesstimate.
Telling us. Because right now truly no one knows what, what, what the mid, mid-year or quarterly. Telling us. Because right now, truly, no one knows what the mid-year or quarterly adjustment means, you know?
It could be $2 million, it could be $4 million, it could be $50. We don't know.
That's right.
But, but there's a but. There, you know, the education fund from the federal government to the, to every state, there is a, there's a string attached to it, is that if the funds doesn't filter, come to the school districts, that money will be withdrawn. So I think there's a limit as far as how much state aid that the governor can cut. And one number that I saw actually was 500 million for all the school districts.
But I, yeah.
So it's not like everything can disappear.
I mean, a couple of years, a couple of weeks ago, we said that they were going to use, they were going to cut state aid based on the amount we got from federal. Correct?
Right.
And, I mean, three years, Vicki was, and a number of us were been, were arguing with the state regarding reducing, you know, gap, right?
Yeah.
And now I'm hearing there's new, you know, the pandemic Elimination Act. So I guess I have no confidence in this, an open-ended revenue reduction from the state.
Yeah, I think that's probably the right position to take. So, you know, what happens if state aid reduces our aid significantly in the middle of the year? Well, likely, about 80% of our salary, our staff will probably wind up doing staff reductions mid-year. We're going to delay, we're going, hold on one second, we're going to delay purchasing some of our equipment till as late as possible, so we'd have some funding to pull from. But I think it's a reality that if if the governor chooses to reduce our state aid mid-year, that we may have to lay people off in the middle of the year. I hope we aren't at that place. But I think it's important for us to all understand that we could be.
Because Jane and I were on a call, when was the last, what, last week sometime, Jane?
Yes, like the beginning of last week.
Right, New York State School Board Association held a budget call, and they didn't really tell us anything more than we knew right now. But they did say that they had nothing, they had nothing to add, but they did say that we need to be fiscally prepared using fund balance, because they couldn't, they can't give us an idea either.
Yeah, that is also our plan. Adam, can you go back two slides? Well, this is it. So this is what Christine was talking about earlier. So our recommendation as a package is that we want to reduce the budget and reduce the tax levy, because we think this is the right time, the right thing to do. And then also, we are very, very aware of the potential revenue shortfalls. And these are the three items that we'll use to fill the gap, if it happens.
Right, we're heading out with imperfect information, knowing that it can change mid-year. I think, and I want to make sure everyone else gets to speak if they're comfortable with moving forward with this revised budget. But I think this, I mean, I know how much work has gone into it. I think this is the most we can do and the best we can do right now, with the information we have, knowing that we have a contingency plan for changing this up mid-year based on what we hear from the governor. There's not, we can't do more than that. We tone of a crystal. And we could make those cuts now. I personally am not ready to start making slash and burn cuts to our staff right now, knowing that we may not need to. So I'm comfortable with moving forward that, knowing that we have to make changes. But, you know, I certainly want everyone else to comment on that, if they wish to.
Can, can I go now? Yeah, so I appreciate that you guys took such a thoughtful look at what specific elements from Tier One and Tier Two made sense to bring this budget and the levy down. Because I think that it was important, given the unknowns and the knowns, in terms of where we're going to have some challenges with revenue. I, I feel comfortable where we've brought it to. I feel comfortable that we, that you guys are planning in a way to adjust if mid-year, we have a, a complete cut of our state aid, which I very much hope doesn't come to pass. But I also appreciate that there's no, that the instruction was preserved as well as safety, because those were my, the most important things to me when it came to making some smart reductions in this budget. So I feel comfortable with that. And then also looking ahead to next year, which I actually think is going to be more challenging for us when it comes to working a budget out for next year. I think we're also not leaving ourselves hamstrung for, for planning next year's budget. Even though it feels forever away, it'll be here really fast. So overall, I'm, I'm comfortable with the proceeding right now.
I am too.
Yeah, I am too. I'm comfortable with accepting your, your proposed recommendations with the 1.65 budget increase and 1.49 tax levy increase. I think it, it reaches the right balance because it preserves our programs, you know, our academic programs, social emotional programs, which will all be very much needed with all of this eye learning. And we really don't know where we'll be in the fall. So the students will need a lot of supports. And it provides for mid-year adjustments. So that's good. And it also doesn't go to the extreme of slashing things to zero, because we have next year coming up. And, look, you know, we don't want to lose our schools, we don't want to lose our school districts, we don't want to lose our programs. But next year, we might see even further cuts. And certainly cuts in state aid and what we might have to do for our community, because we don't know what the unemployment numbers will look like by next year. There could be a huge increase in the shortfall, in the deficit at the state level with a decrease in state income tax revenues. And also the TRS will, you know, we might see a lot of trouble there with that five-year averaging to calculate our, you know, employee benefits line. You know, the market is going to go down, and that's going to be part of the average for employee benefits. So the school district contribution is going to go up. So we may see even more reduction in state aid and increase in pension obligations. And we'll probably need to go into fund balance for next year. So, I mean, that's a definite argument to not just deplete our fund balance quite this year. So I, I'm, so sorry, it's a long-winded way of saying I'm comfortable with your, with your proposals for now.
All right, so.
Do we hear from Warren?
Yeah, I can, I can say something if you'd like. I am very uncomfortable with this whole process. It's not, I mean, I have complete faith in you, Christine, and you, John. John, for 10 or 11 years, you've always prepared a very fiscally responsible budget for the district, when we had growth and when we had, when we had contractions. So this is nothing against that. I'm just very uncomfortable with, with what we're dealing with. I, I feel that I'd rather be a little more conservative in this, in the approach. I, I can appreciate that we have Tier One, Tier Two, it looks like we have Tier 1.4 maybe, 1.5. I know I had asked for Tier like 2.5 into 2.3 into 3. I'm comfortable with the fact that you want to reduce staff mid-year if necessary. That gives me some hope that we're, I mean, just like, you know, the federal government, we don't, we can't run a deficit budget. And, you know, I know the federal government said they're going to give us funds, but that fund goes to the state, and the state's
Right, offsetting it.
The state's going to offset what they give us with that. So they're, you know, we're not really getting anything from the federal government. I can, I'm not so worried about next year as much. I understand what you're saying, Vicki. Yeah, we have to worry about next year, but next year's next year. I would, I would prefer that we don't, as you said, deplete our fund balances all this year, that we take a look at a balanced approach in case we have to adjust mid-year. I appreciate everything you've done to put this together, Christine and John. And I'm sorry if I'm sounding very negative. I mean, you know me, I'm always a glass half-full type of guy. I look positive of everything. This is just not a very positive time. And this, and again, it's more for no confidence, not at your level, but at a level above you, right, from the state level. So if you want to prepare this, I would be happy to look at it again. And I can get behind the budget. I'm not happy with the way things are going. Again, not from your point of view. But I will support what the professional educators and staff members in our district say. And I will continue adding my three cents as necessary.
Thanks, Warren. Adam, can you just move the slides to the next one, the next one? Okay. So this is how I propose we move forward. Some, you know, we could get new information over the next two weeks that could impact this. So I just say that outright. But what I'm thinking we should do, because we have some traditional structures I believe we should follow, even though we're in a non-traditional setting here. I'd like to have, and I talked to the PTA President Lori Townsend, I'd like to have a modified budget forum for the community next Wednesday at 6:30 on Zoom. But to do that in a way that's productive and effective, we'll probably have, I have asked Lori if she could moderate questions for Adam, Tony, John, and I, as we present the budget. So I'll take slides from this discussion and meld it together, as I normally do when I'm presenting the full budget, present that to community, to the community, and using a structure that allows Lori to ask us questions as a panel, we'll address some of the, the community questions, and then hear additional feedback that I'll bring forward to the board if we're in a place on April 29th where I could present a final budget for your consideration for adoption. The reason I'm suggesting that you move forward and potentially adopt the budget on that date is without any additional information from state ed or from Albany, the earliest they could require us to hold a budget vote and an election could potentially be June 1st, although I don't think that that's possible. We have to act as if it is, because that's the only information that we have right now. So in order to meet our noticing requirements, we need to move forward with a budget that, that week. So unless something happens over the next week and a half that would require us to have an additional meeting, because maybe Governor Cuomo provides some clarity around state aid, I suggest that this probably be the meeting
We re-adopt it.
Procedure that we use. So next Wednesday, we would have our PTA Budget Forum at 6:30. And then the following Wednesday, I would present the budget for your consideration for adoption, using the parameters that we discussed tonight. Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Moving forward. And Adam, I think there's another slide, where we just remind everyone that, you know, this is a unique situation. So if you have any comments or considerations or questions, you can email any of us at any time, and we'll get back to you around budget or any other, any other concerns or questions you have regarding anything that we presented tonight. I think the last slide is our thank you slide, right? So thank you. That concludes our budget presentation.
Thank you for all the hard work. And we know it was a lot. Okay, we are moving on to committee reports, but I don't believe there are any, someone can correct me if I'm wrong? Nope. Okay. Public comment. I know we've, for those of you just joining us, we have worked out a system to do this on Zoom. We are, have a way of allowing public comment, which is if you are an attendee, you hit the little button that says raise your hand. We will call on you in order. I could see three hands up now, or two, in any event. And we will call you, and you will have three minutes to give a comment. It is a comment, not a question and answer. I think most of you know that, but just in case. As you know, we can be contacted via phone or email about anything. And so we just ask that you limit your statements to three minutes, and that we as board members do have the option to discuss amongst ourselves anything that was brought up during the comments presented. So the first hand I had seen up, Adam will move you from attendee to panelist, where you can speak. And we'll have to make sure that we can get a video on you. That's the other thing. If for some reason, your video's not working, unfortunately, that's our rule on Zoom. We want to be able to see the person and have them identify themselves. We have, it has worked out really well. Sometimes it doesn't. So our apologies in advance if it doesn't. Our first person is Joan Foley that can be moved over as a panelist.
Thank you. I'm here to share my thoughts on the grading policy. I suggest that the third quarter grades be pass/fail for the middle school and enriched algebra, which I understand would impact really. And I think that's because we were hit by a pandemic that have impacted our students and our faculty in ways that your proposal for grading doesn't appreciate. They've transitioned to a whole new way of learning, and with wholesale, and a wholesale approach, with no training by the faculty beforehand, and learning on the fly, not only for the faculty but the students. And in light of that, the students should not be assessed by a numerical grade. And some students may have scored poorly on assessments in the beginning, or less well that they like, in the beginning of the third quarter, and could not have improved their grade in this environment of distance learning. And I don't think it would be equitable to assess, and frankly, I'm shocked, you're attempting to assess students either for a numerical grade for purposes of enriched algebra, but for a letter grade in purposes for those students who are in middle school that are not in enriched algebra. And it's out of step with what's happening in other institutions, not only other school districts in New York State. But for example, I'm a faculty member at a law school, and we've gone mandatory pass/fail. Grades are important then, and high stakes for those students. But it's an issue of equity. Not everyone's being affected. Not everyone has environments where they can study uninterrupted. And without, this idea of keeping a numerical value for some courses, and actually, letter grades for others, misses that and is tone deaf to the experience of the students themselves. I'm frankly very surprised that we're doing something that many graduate programs have resisted doing, because it's simply an issue of equity. I don't think that the tie to a numerical grade for enriched algebra in some courses, or for a letter grade for the remaining, remaining middle school, understands or kind of is reactive to what is actually happening in students' homes. These same types of comments go for the fourth quarter as well. There's this idea that, I do also say, I did have a level of concern too about the phrase that I heard, "Our teachers will use their best judgments as they assign grades for the students in the third quarter." Dr. Ackerman used that language. And that's not an objective determination that students have or their parents have to be able to understand how they will be assessed in the third quarter. That doesn't leave me with any more clarity about how students will be assessed, and seems to be an objective determination. It also seems to be
Excuse me? I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay, sorry, your three minutes are up. But if you have additional things that you'd like to say, please feel free to send them along to us, okay? please feel free to send them along to us, okay? Okay, thank you. The next person is Jeffrey Mester.
Without reducing last year's total level of reserve funds. That's the end of the sentence, I got cut off on last year, last week, two weeks ago. When then subsequently spent over 10 minutes discussing protocol, whether or not I could finish that sentence. It's also, as protocol goes, it's interesting that the board has just made, they've come to a consensus prior to even hearing public comment about tonight's presentation. I also want to make it clear that we're not talking about cuts here, we're talking about reducing the increase. And that's, and that's a big distinction. We're not cutting any of the budget whatsoever, if this is what you end up proposing to the community. You're reducing, you're reducing the increase. And in economic time, you know, personally think you should reduce it even more. But that's really all, and interesting that you have increase in the athletic department personnel, but you're cutting a security person. I mean, you know, we could get into the details of each one, but I guess that's not really necessary. But I wish you would do more, but I appreciate the little you've done, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jessica Lindell.
Hi, how you doing? This is Scott and Jessica Lindell.
Hi, how are you?
Good, thank you for your time, appreciate you letting us comment tonight. My comment really is kind of focused on, again, what we've talked about, what we've heard a lot of, the increased class sizes in first grade for kindergartners moving forward. Obviously, you know, it's been an interesting time for teachers, but also parents who have been doing something they've never had to do before or even envisioned. You know, looking after and teaching our children how to read, how to write, how to do some of the most basic fundamental things that are so critical for a foundation of learning. You know, someone made a comment earlier tonight that this really goes across all grades, but I would completely disagree with that comment as kindergartners and first graders are learning so many more critical skills, whereas older students can function and, and learn more effectively on their own. With the fact that half of this school year has been missed by kindergartners, having them go to first grade with less direct attention from teachers while, you know, expenditures are being made for psychologists that seem very high, in my opinion, gym teachers, other things that are not as critical as direct teacher-student interaction. I think that the board should reevaluate, you know, its choice to leave or let class sizes grow, particularly when these kindergartners have missed so much time already and will be moving forward with less attention. So that's my comment, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Devin and Christine, I'm not sure last name, maybe when you jump on you can identify.
Hello, this is Devin and Christine Core. We're in New Dugrathlin this year. We have three daughters, third grader, kindergartner, kindergartner and toddler. Couldn't agree more with everything that Lindell said. We were researching Chapuaq and after all the research we did, we were surprised. There's even a discussion around reducing teachers in the first grade. To us, small group learning, direct teacher-student contact at the kindergarten first grade level is most important for kids to mature. And these kids are not benefiting in the same way that everyone else is right now from iLearning. And thank you, iLearning has been great, we see it 100% with our third grader. It's not the same for kindergartners and going to a class of 23 is going to be very difficult for them. This is about, I'm not going to go into more than Lindell said, but I think we need to look at the budget note. There are increases, there's a lot of spends going in. There should be saves this year, you mentioned you're looking at transportation. There's going to be other money that wasn't spent, there has to be saves that can be used. That's being used by cameras. Are cameras as important as these teachers? I don't know, but it's things we need to look at, right? As we go into next year, there's increases, as I mentioned, psychologists, there's increases in contractors and admins and testing. How do we prioritize what's non-negotiable, i.e. two larger class, teacher-student ratio for our, for our first graders versus some of the other things? We really need to consider that as we go into next year to make sure that these kindergartners now coming out of what is a very tough time for them, get the right nurturing into first grade so they can excel in their years.
Thank you, we appreciate your comments. Next is Tony Napolitano.
Hello.
Hi Tony.
Hi. So first of all, thank you very much to, to the board and you're all working very hard and these are tough times, we have a lot of difficult decisions to make. You know, I know that I commented on this last time and there's been a lot of discussion both last time and this time, so I don't want to be too redundant, but I would like to make some additional comments regarding the class size for the first graders next year. I am a bit concerned that we're not considering enough that this year's kindergarten students are really the most vulnerable to falling behind during distance learning. They, they simply don't have the literacy or computer skills to really learn independently. I could see this personally, in my household, we have a fourth grader and a kindergartner and, and it's really a world of difference. And, and I know that the kindergarten teachers and specialized teachers and everyone else is working extremely hard, as well as the parents, but it's just, you know, these are just the facts. These are just essential skills these kids just don't have yet and makes it very difficult for them to learn. So they're, they're already behind. So, you know, I think that planning to come in right at contractual limits is, is really disservice to, to these kids. And I understand in, in past years that we would wait and see what it looks like in September, see what the enrollment is, if we need an additional adult or additional teacher. But I just think this is not a typical year, but everything is different. We know that there's additional housing, significant additional housing going up in town. We know that it's likely the families will enter the district as folks flee the city, you know, and it's so, you know, I feel that we just have these kids that, you know, are really the least equipped to benefit from the, from iLearning and they're already falling behind. So, you know, I think we need to consider it when we think about their class sizes next year. So again, thank you very much. I know we're all here trying to make very difficult decisions and appreciate the time.
Thank you very much. And then we have one more, Russ and Melanie Dritz. Can we see you?
Hello everybody.
Hi, how are you?
Good, thanks for taking the time to talk to me this week and I spoke to a bunch of you. You know, obviously we're calling about first grade again and Christine, unfortunately, I respectfully disagree with you on, on your assessment of the different grades. There's a reason that we're all here.
And the only people
And the only people here who are speaking up about this, because it looks like an outlier. And it's not about the contract, it's just about student grades, you know, and having young kids. The, you know, I can't even imagine having my kindergartner now go into first grade next year wearing a mask and having to talk to a teacher and making that seem one of them. And that may have to happen, but contractually or not, you know, these kids need help. You know, I don't know if you saw today, but there was a great article in Inside Higher Education that discussed the likely state budget cuts. It actually, the takeaway was actually that you wouldn't have cuts to K-12. I don't know if this $170,000 that you guys are talking about is about the CARES Act and/or included that money, but likely that reduction did not include the extra federal money that's coming in from the CARES Act. It's kind of politically untenable to reduce K-12 budgets as well as healthcare right now. So in the industry, everybody's expecting that post-secondary and higher education is going to get cut and everything else will be saved. You know, one of the things that I would recommend, I don't quite understand why we're reducing the levy this year. I think the levy should be as high as possible, because we're going to need the money this year, next year and every year thereafter. And if it ends up being good, then great. You know, then you have extra money for next year and you don't increase the levy at all the following year. But to reduce the levy this year means that you're going to come up with a budget shortfall potentially and that's the future. And you need contingencies and that's the way I budget at work. I would say that the one part of the budget that I looked at that I don't understand is the assistant principal, the $200,000 addition of an assistant principal when we already have three. That seems like a nice to have, but it doesn't seem like a have to have. And as explained to me, it seems like it's about morale and losing people next year if they're overburdened and overworked. I'll tell you, we're all overburdened and we're all overworked right now and no one in their right mind would quit in the middle of a recession. So, you know, my recommendation, and my recommendation when I spoke to the board, was to allocate additional hours that we could add to existing teaching staff so that it's a flex schedule and we've done this before, a number of years ago. It's how we got one of our assistant principals. And it gives them, you a chance to flex up by giving them additional hours. And then if, in the case of the budget turns out to be great, then you can give them all the hours. But it makes sure that our core, our teachers are fit. And so that's my recommendation. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I think that is it for public comment for the evening. Did anyone want to discuss anything or are we good to move on? Okay, thanks everyone. We are on item three, approvals and ratifications. I'd like to take 3.1 and 3.2 together. We resolve that the Board of Education accepts the minutes of the March 25th, 2020 board meeting and then the March, the April 1st, 2020 special board meeting. Can I have a motion for 3.1 and 3.2?
I move.
Anyone second? Okay, Holly, is that you? I can't hear your audio.
Yes, sorry.
Okay, that's okay, no problem. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. I lost Warren for a second.
I'm here.
Oh, there you are, okay, it's just my screen, my apologies. Okay, moving on to item four, Christine.
I recommend 4.1 instructional as presented.
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for item 4.1.
I will second. Oh, all right, I'll let Hillary second. Any questions, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Item five, this is our consent agenda, which permits the board to make effective use of its time and vote in a single motion to adopt, adopt those relatively routine matters in contracts. We have items 5.1 through 5.7 on our consent agenda tonight. I can make a motion about any board member during discussion can discuss any item or ask that be pulled from the agenda. So can I, I will move our consent agenda for tonight for items 5.1 through 5.7. Can I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion, questions, et cetera, about any of the items on the consent agenda?
I was actually just wondering if we could discuss 5.4.
Yeah, so was I. I thought maybe we could have Christine or someone else just
Okay.
You know, explain what it is so people can understand.
So we're in a situation where we contract out for transportation and the ability to be able to reengage in transportation once we return is critical. So we have to balance what are, what are our obligations to our taxpayers, right? Versus what are our obligations to make sure that our transportation company that we contract with can stay solvent? So when we return to school, they're able to function. So districts have, are approaching this in all different ways. We are presenting a contract to you that enables us to still support Chapuaq transportation in a way that when we do return to school, the company will still exist and be able to support our students in the future. So we will have cost savings associated with this temporary contract due to the closure. But we also will remain, retain our connections to Seth as the over, as the person who oversees Chapuaq transportation and make sure the buses are maintained so they're ready to run when we do reopen. So that's what is before you tonight.
So it pretty much is, is letting them stay in business and ready to get up and running with basically the head of Chapuaq transportation and continued maintenance of the vehicles so that if and when we return to school, we have a bus company.
That's correct.
Because am I, am I correct that if, if we, if we don't proceed this way and they're not able to stay solvent and there is no bus company called Chapuaq Transportation for us, we have to be rebidding or buying buses or this is, it's not a, it's not a small, it's not a small change, right, should something happen?
If we didn't contract with Chapuaq Transportation and we needed to move to a different bus vendor, we could see a substantial increase in our costs. Okay, so it's more than just
Just a lag time in having a buses.
Yeah, and, and then there's, there's the whole partnership aspect of this, right? They've been our partners for many, many years and we're in a crisis. So it's not only about the financial impact if we had, if Chapuaq Transportation couldn't make it through this period and didn't exist anymore. It's about maintaining a, a strong partnership with, with a, with a contracted company that's critical to school operations and designing a contract in a way that makes sense for us and our responsibility to this district and our taxpayers, but also our responsibility to make sure that we have appropriate transportation for our kids. So that's what this contract does for the district that you're presented with tonight.
Right, they're, I mean, they're a crucial part of the, the community as well, not just our operations. So definitely see all the, all the reasons, thank you.
Thanks for
And also, I'd just like to say that they have gone so over and beyond for our community, especially in times of crisis during, you know, Superstorm Sandy and all of them, you know, and other very challenging moments we've had. For instance, by staying with the kids until their parents could pick them up way into the evening. I remember in one case that, that happened. And they've always been very, very considerate and thoughtful of the kids. And we, you know, we do have people put their kids into their hands and so they've been very responsible. And so I think it goes beyond the financial piece of it. It's the, also the caretaking of, of all of our kids that goes into the, the mix in considering whether, you know, they stay afloat or not. And like someone said, they're part of our community.
Right, I think, I think, I think, right, I think it's important that everyone understand that this is not just a, a typical contractor that we deal with. This is a vital part of our operations and, and it's, it's another arm to how we So thank you for explaining all that Christine.
If we didn't have them, we'd have employees and we'd be taking care of our employees the same way, so, or some way.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion? All in favor of our consent agenda items 5.1 through 5.7?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Facilities and financials, there's nothing on tonight's agenda. Notice of future meetings. As we, well, we do have a meeting Tuesday, April 21st, 8:00 PM. That is the P and, bottom of Northern Westchester Bosse's budget vote.
At the AM.
I'm sorry, AM, excuse me, yes, AM. Again, which will not be in person. And then we, even though it's on the agenda, it's the 22nd or 29th. I think we decided that the meeting would, for budget adoption and school budget presentation would be the 29th of April and we will obviously be sending notes to the community at that time. And then Wednesday, May 6th, at 7:30 PM would be our following meeting. All in favor or can I have a motion to end the meeting at 10:17?
I move.
Second? I'll second. All in favor? Aye. Okay, we are adjourned everyone, thank you so much and thank you to all the attendees who joined us tonight.